No, other than let's be considering making a couple tweaks to the animal ordinance about dangerous dogs. We're having a little issue not being able to respond until they're bit. So we need to kind of be thinking about it.
I guess we need to lay out.
Yeah, we were supposed to have a board and I don't know if you ever read reappoint? If somebody else called me.
My time to know the ones on David, Don your order.
Yeah. So. Three. Just been thinking about it. I think. That's just one more thing that we don't people might ask us about, but if there is a potential dangerous dog, we need to at least go investigate and see.
We should.
I mean, the people will feel better about it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want a bulldog walking up my heels in my house either.
What's that?
Yeah, so thank you.
I don't want one of the little ones.
No, those are.
I can't tell them what I would normally do, but we can't do that.
Some of the board of.
Yeah. But I can't tell the. Yeah. I think you wanted to ask our editor about the poll.
Yeah. What was the poll? What was the status?
I stopped last season. It was like seventy eight.
It's a long.
It is, but there was a glitch last night with the voting, so I was keeping up with it in real time. Um, Knott Street had a hundred sixty votes and Tallulah Road one A had one oh seven. And the other one is not even, I think they had like six on Old Tallulah, so. It was neck and neck early on with Tallulah and Knott Street.
You limit the voting to what's per person.
I, I know. How dare I try to be fair about it? This isn't no Asheville assistant times poll, okay? We're going to break the vote. Sorry, twenty-two votes on Old Tallulah Road property, so.
Twenty-two.
Yep.
Now that, that, that's.
No.
The Congress for the County Board of Commissioners. Members of the County Board of Commissioners are asked hereby, their duty under the strength of government ethics act, to avoid conflicts of interest to any appearance of such common things, under further or instructions in refrain from participating in new matters, coming before this Department of County Commissioners with respect to which there was conflict of interest or appearance of such common thing.
Good day, heaven and father. Just thank you for this course today that you give us. Father, we're just so thankful for the blessings and gifts that you've bestowed upon us. Father, we ask that you just continue just to move that up to the source of love towards us and, Father, especially in those who are neighbor counties, Father, that has, has experienced this disaster that they have experienced. And, Father, we ask that you just continue to bless and just protect. And, Father, just give us an understanding and listen to the understanding that we need to be able to do what we do. And, Father, we're just so thankful for everyone in our county, and we just ask that you just continue just to entertain. And, Father, we thank you again for everything you do in precious and all this, and you trust me, brother. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father. And to the public for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Judge.
Yes, sir. If we could add four A for the minutes, approval of the minutes for September the seventeenth workshop and regular, and under fifteen I M Ds, we need to appoint Marie Brown as the T M C Board Leader to replace Meredith.
Do I have the motion to approve your questions and other changes? First second. I'm motion to approve the advantage from my workshop and grave complaint on Mount certain two. Second. Third. On favor. I'm motion to close the manual meeting with another department account for our C D P G closeout. Your second. Judge. On favor. Over here. This is, this is for the. Good evening, Chair, Board, and everybody. Mr. David Galley handling the, uh, the closeout presentation for the C D G. He's our grand administrator with withers right now.
David. Thank you, Jason. Good evening, commissioners. Um, like Jason said, my name is David Gallo, and with the rapid, I served as the grand administrator for the community development block grant, neighborhood revitalization grant. Uh, this is one of the final items we're gonna undertake to close out the grant is the public hearing. So this is a public hearing closeout for physically year twenty seventeen, community development block grants, neighborhood revitalization program. Grant County's grant number was seventeen C two nine A four. The purpose of this public hearing is to discuss the program performance, allow citizens the opportunity to make any comments and close out the C D P G private. In early twenty nineteen, uh, the Grand County received seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in the U, from the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development's community development block grant funding, and it flowed through the North County Department of Commerce for grant seventeen C two ninety-four. In June of twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four this year, the county requested additional bonds from N C Commerce to the amount seventy-one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. These funds wrapped to the rehabilitation of the privately owned and well-funded budget line item. With these funds, the additional funds that some grants now received from N C Commerce totaled to eight hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. The proposed project activities were to reconstruct two single-family homes and rehabilitation repairs to one single-family home. The county was able to assist with reconstruction of two single-family homes. All the housing activities benefited low to moderate income individuals. And for one hundred percent to low to moderate income persons. Program activities are complete. The big grant funds, um, in the amount of ninety-seven percent were expended to date. Seven hundred twenty-four thousand six hundred eleven dollars eighty-nine cents of these grant funds were spent towards the reconstruction and rehab of the homes and seventy-four thousand nine seventy-six thirty-four for the administration fees. The requisitions for funds were submitted by September nineteenth expenditure deadline and C D P G closeout documents to be submitted to the Department of Commerce by the line of, of December twentieth of twenty twenty-four. This project has been, has been a success and remained in compliance with the required federal regulations associated with the funding. Does anyone have any questions or problems? Thank you.
Thank you, David. You did a great job of work, enjoying working with you through the whole process. You're really, really helpful for, to me, and I'm sure there's Stacy in the county, so thank you for everything you did. That's all we got. Chair. The House Department of Care and reopen the record. On favor. Is there a motion to adjourn at the sitting? Make sure you close out the floor. It's reporting.
I'll make that motion.
Honorable Judge Sellers, Chief Superior.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Texas Sellers, and I am the senior resident Superior Court Judge for the forty-third A District, which is Clay Cherokee Ground, Flane, and, um, Cherokee, Clay, Ground, Swain, and Macon Counties. I usually say that in reverse, and I didn't do that this time. Um, I appreciate your time here tonight. Um, all of the commissioners received a letter with a number of issues, ongoing issues that are occurring with the Grand County Courthouse. And I have several of my colleagues here tonight, as well as a particular matter that was sent with solid call of the seated district court judges at that particular time. You don't have any other superior court judges because I am the only superior court judge in this district. Um, the Honorable Roy Rivera, who is our chief district court judge, is here tonight, as well as Kayla Wingate, the Honorable Kayla Wingate, who is also one of our district court judges. Judge Forga and Judge Leslie are both in route here. Unfortunately, they could be caught trying across the mountain from being laid completed courts, so hopefully they wouldn't win us here shortly. And I will say as well, we have the Honorable Ashley, uh, Horsby, our, uh, Welch, our particular wonderful district attorney, who is also here with us tonight. And I'd like to give specifically Judge Rivera, and Miss Welch, a few moments to speak as well on those particular subjects. Um, it is my understanding that you are aware of issues that have been going on with the courthouse. I've been practicing in the courtroom in Grand County since two thousand and seven, and so I've had the opportunity to come over here and work as a prosecutor. I worked over here as a defense attorney. I've had the opportunity and the pleasure to preside in our courts as a district court and as a superior court. I love the people in Grand County. I am a small-town mountain girl, and they're not big small-town mountain girls who get to come back and have the opportunity to serve, serve mountain communities. And I am not here saying that things are wrong in Grand County. I am here to help in any way that I can, as well as all of my colleagues, because we want what's best for Grand County. And at this point in time, the courthouse is not sufficient to conduct the business that needs to be handled in that courthouse. And I know that the commissioners have heard about that from questionnaires provided for their injuries. I know that you received a letter from the previous Superior Court Judge, finally be left, after trying a case which took a number of weeks in Grand County in two thousand sixteen. I know that my predecessor, the Honorable Will Coward, also implemented a plan indicating that the courthouse was insufficient to provide an opportunity to have trials for cases that were of great magnitude for a number of reasons: facilities, security, and other things that within would cause Grand County to have to provide additional funding for transportation, trying to find somewhere else to have that particular trial in another county, coordination for those things. And then it brought to your attention back in two thousand sixteen with his implementation of that particular order, as well as, I know that there was a referendum for a sales tax increase for a justice center in two thousand sixteen. So. To use a mountain term, it's time to fish your cut bait. It's time to take care of some things to make that happen. We have one courtroom in the, in the Grand County courthouse. It is the only courthouse at this point in time in this district that has one courtroom. There's nowhere for the jury to assemble. The bathroom facilities are not adequate. The clerk's office has issues. There have been, and I will say, and I thank you all for implementing air conditioning. I can remember a time when we didn't have A C. But at this point in time, the HVAC that's in there causes a lot of racket, and it's very difficult for the court reporters to hear, it's difficult for the clerks to hear because it's not vented throughout the building. So there are a number of issues that come to mind that I'm not going to reiterate everything that's in my letter. You received that letter, and it's very detailed. But at this point in time, we're to the point that we're going to violate somebody's constitutionally protected rights if something does not happen. So I have requested that you provide me with a plan within sixty days, and that letter was sent at the end of August. That sixty days will be at the end of this month, and I look forward to working toward finding, finding a place for a justice system, getting that plan in place, and determining what needs to happen to be those next future steps. I don't want to be the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room. And if we work together, I won't have to be the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in this room. But I, I am at this point just strongly encouraging our commissioners to move forward on this project that you have known and been put on notice for for a long time for the citizens of Grand County. And I won't even get into the issues about the jail. Our honorable sheriff is here tonight, and I will give him also just a few minutes to discuss those issues that you are well aware of as well. Clark Holloway is here as well. Do you wish to speak? All right. Then the first person I will call up is Judge Rivera. I appreciate and thank you for your time, and we'll be happy to answer any questions back here.
Good evening. My name is Roy Rivera. I am the chief district court judge here in District Forty-three. Uh, my district goes from Blaine'sville all the way to Murphy and everything in between. So I, and I really appreciate y'all giving us a chance to come sit with you, uh, this evening about this very important issue. One of my statutory duties as chief district court judge involves, uh, creating the district court schedule. When I say the district court schedule, that's your D S S court, your child, domestic relations court, your child's court, your juvenile, your traffic courts, criminal courts for, uh, H and I felonies and misdemeanors. Um, so I have to schedule those courts for all seven counties. Judge Sellers mentioned one of the unique challenges that we have here in Grand County is this is the only courthouse in the district with one courtroom. Um, and. Oh, I'm not going to compare Grand County to Haywood County, but I could compare it to Swain and to Clay and, and maybe in certain instances to Macon, where we can have multiple courts doing one at the same time in one county. I believe that's very important moving forward. You know, in nineteen seventy-five, nineteen eighty, it's probably not necessary in any of our taxes amounts, because things have changed. Population's changed, it's grown. Uh, the number of filings is not what it was intended to be here, okay? So we've got to have more courts. Uh, for example, sometimes there may be a civil session of Superior Board that's scheduled for the entire week. And jury trials come and go, and cases may settle. All of a sudden, there's court space available one, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, but I can't schedule that five months out, uh, because we have to block off an entire week. In other counties, it's not a big deal. We can schedule a court regardless of what happens to Superior Court. I can schedule a district court session for D S D, domestic relations, child school, et cetera. It's not an issue. So that is something from a scheduling standpoint, I believe, by personal means, a great service to people of Grand County, that I can't give them a court and guarantee them a court, uh, like I can to other six counties in the district. It's not an issue anywhere else, okay? And that, that's the situation we all have today. None of us asked for this. This is where we are, you know, on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, so I, I think the, the time has come, and I think Judge Sellers mentioned in her letter that we have all signed off on, uh, as well. Um, there are a number of safety issues, uh, in that court, in that courthouse. You know. As you heard, it's impossible to try a jury trial, a serious jury, a felony jury trial in that courthouse, because you now have situations where criminal defendants could be interacting, if they're not testing, could be interacting with jurors, could have witnesses interacting with jurors, victims of crimes interacting with jurors, uh, interacting with defendant's families. It, it. We could have a combustible situation, you know, we don't want, we need to be proactive and not reactive, uh, moving forward. That's my advice to the board today. Um, and, um, I think that. We, we need to have a justice center that has at least two functioning courts. I would, I would argue two good courts, a small third, because I think that's what people of Grand County deserve. Um, and, uh, I, I think it can be done. I think we can, we can in smart fashion, uh, but I think you have our support. I can tell you that. Uh, and I could also say that, you know. Moving forward, we need to hear Grand County, we need to have a justice center that, uh, can stand and testify, that can last the next seventy-five years without anybody worrying about this. Uh, we need to have a modern facility, a safe facility, and an efficient facility that all the people of Grand County can be proud of. And I thank you all.
At this point in time, I will find our district attorney, Miss Welch, the opportunity to speak just a moment, and I do want to just introduce so that everyone is aware who else just came in the court with our, the courtroom. In the meeting would be the Honorable Donna Forga, who is also one of our district court judges, and the Honorable Monica Leslie, one of our other district court judges. So tonight we have four district court judges, all from Haywood County. The other two, Judge Green and Judge Pardon, had other obligations, were unable to be here, as well as Jana Allison, the public defender, who is in Haywood County, was unable to be here. So as Judge Rivera just said earlier, we're here to support, and we think that we can do whatever we can to be an assistance, we will. They've got a much longer trip to drive to Grand County than I did from Clay County. And now, of course, uh, our district attorney drove from Haywood County today also. So I want you to understand, we are here on behalf of the people of Grand County, and we do care about the people of Grand County, and we would like to do anything we can to assist you in, uh, creating a justice system for the people of Grand County.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Horsby Welch. I have the great privilege of being your elected district attorney. Um, I represent the seven westernmost counties in North Carolina, and up until a month and a half ago, I was a Mason County resident, and I had been out there since two thousand and five. But Grand County is very special to me, because when I was first hired to come out here as a prosecutor, this was the place that I was sworn in as assistant district attorney for this district. And when I came out here, I thought, um, I came from Henderson County, that's where I was raised. Uh, I thought I would be out in this area for a couple of years, and then I was going to get back home to where my mom and dad were, and all of these years later, I'm still here, and I have the great privilege of being your district attorney. About a month ago, I was in Haywood County to be closer to my very quickly aging parents. Um, I had a sick mom, and I was too far away. So I've traveled quite a bit. I'm now understanding even more than I ever did how big this district is. Um, but this is really important, uh, to me too, and I, I'm just, I'm here to support the judges. I'm here to support Judge Sellers. I want to thank her for writing this letter. Um, if y'all know anything about attorneys, you know that it's hard to get attorneys to agree on anything. We're sort of paid to argue and litigate. It's even harder to get judges and a district attorney to agree on things, because attorneys are known for having egos. Um, I'd like to think that I don't have one, but I know that I do. I'm a district attorney. Um, so to get all of the judges and myself and the public defender to agree on this is unbelievable. Um, and we're not trying to tell you what to do with your community. I don't want y'all to feel that way, that we're coming in here saying, this is what's best for the people of Grand County. Um, that's not what we're doing. But there are certain things that we have to do. And just like Judge Sellers talked about, the rights of, of defendants, uh, victims have rights too. And one of the things that we notice as a prosecutor with the way that our courthouse is set up, when you're a victim of a crime, you're within touching distance to someone that's accused of committing atrocious crimes against you. And that's not right. We don't have anywhere to put a victim. It's not safe for the clerks. It's not safe for probation. It's not safe for everybody that works in that courthouse day in and day out. It's easier for me because my people only have to show up when there's a court day. If y'all noticed, they're not here unless there's a court day. And that was my fault, because they're not sick. The most important job that I have is to make sure that the people that work for me go home at night. And when they're here in the middle of the day with no court, they're not safe unless nobody's fault. But that's just the reality of what it is. So I'm here tonight to let you know that I support Judge Sellers, I support our district court bench, and, uh, and we're here to do anything that we can to help. Uh, and again, we're not trying to tell you what to do. Uh, I really appreciate this opportunity. I appreciate your attention, and thank you for listening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Clark Holloway, would you like to speak for just a moment? I know that Clark Holloway needs no introduction. She's a, she's a Grand County girl. I just would like to say, uh, thank y'all. I appreciate it. The district attorney, I have been well, I love Grand County. I've been in the office for thirty-one years, and my dad was the clerk there. Here, so there's not been anybody else in this county, probably in that courthouse here longer than I have. And I have witnessed that, that trial that Judge Sellers talked about. I was the clerk that worked in the courtroom at that time, and there was one of our drawers, uh, that had to be excused. It was actually drawer number nine that had to be excused because she talked as a witness. Our jury is not safe. Staff is not safe. Um, I appreciate all that you do for us, but our county needs to, uh, improve with what the growth that our court system is growing. We have started a new system in July that the state has implemented, and as of now, there's forty, thirty-nine or forty counties that are live on this new system. My office is going to be expanding. Uh, more than likely, I will be able to get two new staff members. So if you come in my office now, the floor is cracking. It, we, if you get our heels, I've about quit wearing the little spock heels because of the floor being so dangerous in there. They'll come and they'll patch it up wonderful. I mean, our, our maintenance is amazing, but, uh, you know, that is a danger to my staff, uh, our restrooms. We don't have hot water to wash our hands with. They're upstairs, so, um, just things like that that is day that people take for granted. Uh, I think that the citizens of Grand County, even though they might be a, somebody that's being charged with, they need compassion. They need to be safe, that victim of mine, as I said, they need to be, uh, feel like they're safe. I had a, in the courtroom yesterday, uh, the lady that was, uh, in the trial, she walked all the way around, uh, three of the roads to avoid her husband that was there because our courtroom. We've got new tables that are beautiful, but it's, it's, we're out of date, and I just appreciate each and every one of y'all to consider, and let's give this ball rolling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Thompson.
Fifteen years, this may be the first time my brother and I appeared in the same room together. Uh, I was very, uh, happy to talk to Jake Coward before we started meeting today, and he had explained, uh, to me that there was work being done, um, when we think of the justice center, not only of the courtrooms, but of jail. My experience in going around, uh, courthouses around the state of North Carolina, is there more than just courtrooms. There are the G I S office, there are the tax office, there are the clerk's office. They house multiple, uh, state and county offices that are necessary for everyone in the court system to conduct business. Um, a lot of folks that come through the, the courtroom or into the jail are there for a very short time. There are the sons and daughters, spouses, the folks that are here. And what's important to people that are here, when their families have a problem running with the justice system, is that they're there to support them. They're there to help them through the process. It's a great challenge to them when their son, daughter, or child is being sent to Rowland County or Riddell County. And the lawyer. And the lawyer that's been assigned to them with the public defender's office has to drive three or four hours of city clock. We come back, and then when we bring clients, when we bring the defendants here, we're violating state, federal law, because we have several dozen people sleeping on four floors in violation of the fire code, because you don't have that's for them. And we're not able to provide medical attention for them. I think a lot of people here sit there looking forward to, oh, we're supporting y'all. I know that our sheriff's office has had multiple conversations with local government, with state government officials, with our senator and legislator. And we're more than willing to go to Raleigh, and more than willing to go anywhere we're asked to go to help get money. I understand money is very tight right here, right now. I understand that resources are spread thin. And Sheriff talks it, and all of us will do whatever it takes to get as much money as we can from the state to help offset the costs. This is, you know, an expensive endeavor. I'm working on the same project in Yancey County that just got hit by the hurricane. And they just got done breaking the ground, and costs go up. And as costs go up, the legislators are more than willing to help. They're very understanding. And the Honorable Mr. Westy and Corbin are more than willing to help us, as is Mr. Hyves up in that region. We'll do whatever it takes to do, to work with everyone here. We have excellent, excellent contractors, both local, state, and federal, that are more than qualified to support us in developing a plan with everyone in this room, and with everyone sitting in front of us. When you all come up with a timeline, we'll do whatever it takes to help. On behalf of the sheriff, and the folks that I know up here, we'll, we'll move on any timeline as vicious as y'all make it to help y'all achieve this goal as quickly as possible. What we'd really like to do is have the commissioners pick a site, develop a plan, and have, have some set dates and goals, apply with the judge's order, and move forward. We'll get feelings towards working together. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just have to lastly say, once again, I thank you all for your time. I thank you all for your consideration on this project. I will ask if anybody has any specific questions. Just now that we are already willing and able to stand here and tell you that we're, we're ready to help and assist in any way that we can. I thank you for your service to the Grand County community. And we appreciate your time, and I look forward to hearing back from you soon.
Thank you. Firstly, I want to thank y'all for making the trip. I want to thank you for your comments. I don't think that anything will say that this school disagrees with. I thank you for your support and your pledge of assistance, however we may be needed. But with that, I will entertain a motion to enter into negotiations with the ownership of one of our three presented properties.
I will make the motion.
Want to take the property.
Yeah, I will make the motion that we enter into negotiations with Grand County Schools for the non-street property. I think it's the most cost effective and not easy to have any money we get through the school, so it's the community overall. I think it's the most beneficial side for us to make, because I propose justice center.
Sir, sir.
I do that motion, in light of the fact that the county already owns a portion of the property, so that it was a good start on a very large and challenging, you know, that going forward. And I would like to say thank you to all the judges, you know, Ashley, Donna, for them. It's good to see you all here, and I appreciate you being with us tonight. Thank you so much. I'm pretty sure you're going to be here in a little while. When you tell us to say no, we will.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I'll favor it. Reigning Hope, thank you, judges.
Take a deep breath.
Take a, that's all you got to, we're normal. Oh, okay.
My name is Jessica Jones. I am the secretary for the Reigning Hope Foundation. We come to speak today to let you know what we are, what we do. Reigning Hope Foundation is a nonprofit faith-based organization. We're commissioned to serve the people in our community who are struggling with active addiction and recovery, homelessness, or just general needs. Our goal is to bring the people who have no hope, a feeling of hope, and a little bit of say are loved. And we have compassion for them. We should invite them, welcome them, and welcome them with open arms. Our foundation offers a variety of services. The services include transportation to detox, transportation to rehab, housing facilities, providing bags, hygiene products, and support for mothers in need of basic items. We do provide meals on Saturdays. When this foundation started in February this year, they were doing fourteen meals on Saturdays. And that's gone from fourteen to one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and fifty every Saturday night. We're serving approximately three hundred meals. But it's like about four hundred thousand food, and that has tripled since March. We provide diabetic supplies, such as glucose tablets, testing machines, to those that need them. Non-perishable groceries, we've helped with, we help with, for people that can afford, cover it for a long. And we do have hygiene products, foods, and other things for those that need it and are in need. We did just receive our five oh one C three, so we are officially a nonprofit. We received that two days ago. So we are officially a nonprofit, and we are so excited about that. Our latest venture that we bought on was, we've been making donations for hurricane week in the west, the northern western counties that have benefited by our family, as well as helping with disaster relief in some of those areas. So our, the foundation started because we have a very, very big issue with addiction in our community. We have issues with homeless, and it's just getting worse. As of the last counts, homeless, which this is not within the last year, this is twenty twenty-two. We don't have the updated numbers. There were fifty-three homeless. And there have been twenty-seven over us from the place. So our goal is to share imagine. These, we have people coming in every single Saturday, and it's all been about three percent of them are homeless. They're staying with friends, living on the bridges, they're jumping from place to place. And so we are trying to give them a little bit of community, to understand that they're not alone, and they're right. That we will hold their hand, and we'll help them as best we can. Grand County is rated one of the top ten worst counties in the state for opioid deaths. So a lot of our goal and our mission is to just help, just be there. Every single time you go to the building, there's somebody there waiting, somebody that needs help, somebody that needs something. And we, our foundation has been running completely out of pocket. It's been fundraisers. We have never received any grants. We didn't get our nonprofit, so hopefully that's changed. But we are trying our best to expand and expand and expand. Sundays, we hold any attic meetings. They come in and speak, and some of the things that you hear will break your heart. Currently, we're still working on foundation, on hurricane relief through the foundation. We just came back Friday, and the devastation we've seen, it's awful. We are coming to speak to you today just to let you know who we are, asking for community help. If I'll admit, just knowing that we're here to help. We were told, once we received our five oh one C three, we asked about being homeless for reparations funding. I'm still like chicken. Our our whole mission is grace, forgiving people, grace that you can see on the side walking down. You don't know their stories. A lot of them like to come, they won't, they don't tell us, but they will ask for things. They need hygiene bags, whatnot. And some of them are even scared to ask for a grain, because of how poorly they've treated us. So we are doing our best to show a little compassion, and we're going to continue. But thank you for having us today.
We're right across the way, niece, but I'll die careful.
We're the, yeah, it'll be, thank you.
So three forty-seven, drop me your laptop. You did too.
You can go on the top for some gray ones, too. There's multiple gray organizations.
Yes.
So please do that. Close, and if you have to go and speak with them, you should speak with them up front. Speak honestly, while I don't know what you're doing. And they can have, they can really have. That's one of the good things, is just people like you step down, more than just a positive. And that's a lesson, or just, you know, not me, but just friends.
Thank you for the love you've been doing. I've heard of it, and I appreciate it. I think anyone who says addiction never hits their door, well, they're blessed, but they're blind. You don't get somebody in your family, look at them close. It's on all of our doorstep.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to know what you do. And if you do, they'll seek to find us, or anything, be sure and get your request. Before.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bringing our little child.
Hello, my name is Green Holder. I'm the president of Grand County Animal Refuge, where I follow one C three nonprofit animal rescue and animal advocacy program. I also own the local grooming facility, pet training. So I'm very involved with the animals in this community. I have three dogs and my cats of my own. One of my cats, she is a feral cat that someone dropped at my house along with two of its siblings. We just recently got her spayed and vaccinated, so she's just going to live with us. Not that we wanted a fifth cat, but she's a feral, and nobody would have taken her in at another place. Valley River, they cannot accept feral cats because of staff safety, and I totally understand. They will attack you. So with that being said, this is a perfect example of how a colony of cats begins. One feral cat can show up to your house, you can't catch it to remove it. So you just say, well, it's outside, it's fine, it can study, I'll feed it. But little did you know, it's a female. And you also have three feral tomcats that live near your property. In the course of this one, being a cat's life, it can have around twenty-four kittens a year. So with no human interaction, you now have twenty-five feral cats running around your house, all in span of a year. So let's just say none of those kittens are females. So each of those females can have twenty-four kittens a year. So within two years, you've got two hundred and sixteen cats. That's a problem. That's a major problem. So here in Grand County, who are you going to call to help with this? Nobody. Nobody to help with any sort of feral cats. Valley River, like I said, they can't take the ferals. So I mean, use your names calls. I've lived in Grand County a long, and I can tell you what most people around here do with the feral cats. They kill them. For one thing, feral cat can destroy your home. They can pull the wiring out from under your house, tear the insulation, they can ruin your property very quickly. The space rate's being around two hundred and fifteen dollars, it's a local let's. That's for a kitten's space, full vaccines, and flea treatment. Not everybody can afford that. I mean, there's just no way. Some people couldn't barely feed their children. And that's the only way to really actively stop these cat colonies from repopulation. And listening to the candidate forum earlier this week, it really disturbed me. Just hearing how several of the candidates thought that just feeding a stray that they seen on the side of the road was a solution. And it's not. It's, that's not improving that animal's life at all. It's still living on the streets, it's still cold, in the wintertime especially. And some of you might know, I'm trying to get the animal shelter started around here, and as long as the cat sanctuary. And a lot of the collective statements at the forum was about how expensive it is. There is no beneficial service in this day and time that isn't expensive. Everything is so expensive. Nothing is cheap or free. So it's pretty well known that you need a lot of income coming in to make a shelter run as it should. I've applied for several grants, along with several other people that are also helping me. My plan overall was to have like a pet store attached to the shelter, and that could help, you know, fund the shelter cost. And you could also offer like basic training classes to help fund the rescue cost. Maybe even have like a thrift store like Logan's Run does, and that can help fund the rescue. This is no small project, and I'm well aware of that. But if we don't start making some sort of steps forward, it's never going to happen. And as you've heard just from today, the justice center, the homeless, I mean, it's, we've got a lot of issues in this county that really need addressed. And a lot of it has just been, we don't have the money, we don't have, no way to do this, and it just shuts down. There's no road here. It's been very stagnant for a long time. And I think a lot of changes need to be done. There's a lot of talk, too, about in candidate forum, about how a lot of people take in the strays, you know, they just keep them. Is anybody here willing to take home a cat today? Dog, cat, you ready? No. People don't take in strays. They come in, and they immediately will call me. I've got a stray dog. I can't keep it. Everybody's house is full. Mine's full. I mean, I've got eight pets. I don't want anymore. I don't need anymore. And the problem is, we don't have anywhere to take these animals. Valley River is our only partnership that we have. They have been the only place that has helped me with anything with the animals. I have called multiple shelters in all surrounding areas and get nowhere. Valley River can't always take the animals, but they will put you on a waiting list, and you have to be patient. It does take some time, but they go down the list. And I was kind of under the impression, too, that And I was kind of under the impression too that it's like one of those, they'll just put you on the list and call you later. And they never do. But that's not true, they do. It just takes some time. There's tons of animals that moves through Valley River. And without them, I wouldn't be able to do anything. So anybody that lives in this county, I know they have seen the same loose animals roaming town every day. They are, and according to our animal ordinance here, they're like the definition of nuisance animals. They attack smaller animals, they kill them, they tear into people's trash, they're destroying property. Snarling, you know, at people in town. They shouldn't be taken in by our animal control, but they're not. Our animal control don't address any of those types of things. I had spoken with the health director and the only thing that our animal control is addressing is dangerous dogs or potential rareties. Nobody's taking on any sort of welfare for any of these animals. I've had multiple people call me and say that the sheriff's department, they had called. You know, in reference to animal neglect issues, and they've just been told they don't address animal stuff and all the animal control. Well, our animal control isn't addressing the animal welfare, welfare either, so who is? Nobody. Ah, okay, so like I said earlier, I own a local grooming shop in town. And I just want you to know how many cases of extreme neglect and abuse that I see on a daily basis. In any other county that has an active animal control, I would be legally obligated to probably report at least half of the animals that I see every day. And this is hard for me to talk about. But I'm just gonna tell you a little story. I had a customer that had called and told me that her dog was stinky and they cleaned up. That was her exact words. So upon her arrival, I walked out the door of my shop and I could smell the dog when I opened the door. If anybody's been to my shop, it's, you gotta walk upstairs and ramp, you know, get in, it's a pretty good little distance. The dog was a very large breed dog. It was laying on the back of the truck. I saw a huge wad of what appeared to be, appeared to be matted hair on the dog's upper back hip. I simply lifted that hair just to see how close to the skin that the mats were, and about thirty maggots poured out from. A grapefruit sized lunge on the dog's hip. I would assume that it tunneled up into the dog's abdominal cavity because the skin was moving and the dog was passed in. Some of you may not be aware that maggots, they consume rotten flesh. So this dog had enough rotten flesh on its body to supply this huge amount of maggots in its body. So I consider neglecting body as it is to me. I have tried it in my shop more times than I did working for about eleven years in a local nursing home here. I've seen more humans die than probably any young woman should at my age when I worked there. I quickly began to realize that death is actually a blessing. And to watch something suffer, to me, is worse, worse than death. I hope every day that that poor dog died and doesn't live that nightmare of a life. Now that I've given you the backstory with some animal related issues, I'm just gonna address what I came here to accomplish today. First, I just want to ask the county to help kind of support the snippet bus, that's through Logan's Run. And you can pay, I had talked to the director over there. And he said that if you paid like eleven thousand dollars, that's for four visits and they'll come and do the spays and neuters. And after you book the four visits, if you want them to come additionally, it's three thousand dollars per visit for the year. It says they will do around thirty animals per visit, but if it's only the cats, they told me they would do a lot more, maybe even up to like sixty a day. That would tremendously help the stray cat issue that we have in this county. Many of you may not know, there's probably three thousand feral cats living in this county. And a lot of people don't know this one because cats are very elusive animals. They will hide, you may not see them, but at nighttime, somewhere out there trying to look for food and they're everywhere. And they're sick. Most of them are not healthy. I have had four kittens drop off to me that were very young, barely walking. And we had to have all four of them humanely euthanized, which was so sad to see. So lastly, the thing I want to address, we need to pull from animal control. There's enough of a demand and I think Jake would even agree that there's enough to keep somebody busy for a full-time job with animal control here. I think somebody needs to be able to do the welfare checks, address the dangerous dogs, and we need to start enforcing some charges with neglect and abuse here. Not everybody is gonna agree to that either. And I know that where we live, a lot of people just assume that it's just the way we live, but that's a living animal. And we need to start setting some standards and have them watch an actual detailed job description of what our animal control is supposed to be doing, because it's not what I was under the impression of. I wasn't here at the first meeting, but some of the women that I work with was. And she was brutally told, we do have an animal control to address that, but it's not being addressed. So I hope everybody here in some way. Can have a heart for these animals. And I know there's a lot of issues going on in our county. I mean, just from today. The Justice Center and on the redlining code, they're both a necessity here, but this also is. And I don't think that an animal life should be downplayed. Over everything else, because it is important. I have so much more that I have to say. And I will be back, you guys will be hearing from me, I'm sure, because I've got several topics that I do need to address. But these were the top things that were recorded to me. So I thank everybody for your time. And anytime you guys have any questions, feel free to just let me know. And I personally do want to thank Natasha. She has always been a big animal supporter. She regularly donates to the rescue. And she also has taken in several stray cats and I know that she is really what this county needs as far as helping the animals. But I do thank you guys for your time and just. Uh, Dr. Close, I don't know if she can go on a happy end. She heard, I think the show, I don't even finish that. I'm glad for speaking, but thank you, Cynthia Post.
I've actually been working as a volunteer with Valley River for about ten years now. But I am now a shelter vet, so I'm actually employed there as a shelter vet. And so, um, you know, I can definitely attest to the number of animals that come in that require medical care. And just like Brittany was saying, a lot of it is just because of, I mean, like starvation, dehydration, infectious diseases, that kind of thing. And Valley River is happy to take animals from Grand County. But of course, there's costs associated with that. But certainly, if you need any help, I'm here to help as well. And together we'll contact you in time. Do I have any questions?
No, you said, uh. You said, and we, we all understand. I have a cat and dog and rabbit and fur lover. I carry those dog shoes and cat shoes and trucks in the car all the time. And I can't stand to leave the apartment empty. And you mentioned some of the changes that we made, you might make. Um, then I've also heard you say, there's a lot of changes that we need to make. Are there small things that, that you can think about that we might get the general public interested in and including together to, uh, work towards a solution?
Yeah, I mean, people being actively, you know, helping with animal shelter, like your dog or your shelter rescue. People have dogs that are winning, they don't help. But, I mean, overall, spaying and neutering is like the first big step. And without that, it's not gonna help anything. They're just reformed. People here, they can't afford that. I mean, um, I had one that had a foster dog. She was rolling maybe fifty, maybe fifty-five pounds and I called all the surrounding vets and everything was around four hundred dollars to seven hundred and sixty dollars. For a spay and vaccines. People here can't pay that. And the snippet bus is the first step.
I think this is new to us, the view that I, you know, because I think the biggest complaint, even when like in front of was having a two-year spay and neuter, it was the whole being and working back and crossing and then going back and eating. So a lot of people just wouldn't afford it, it was hard. So then the front there has been, as well, to where, you know, it's, it's not sustainable for a lot of families. I think if we could get that bus here, I, I think that that would go a long way.
And there is, I, some of them are here today that like likely helped me grab these stray cats. And they've got their ears, so you know, and then you just release them, but you know that they're fixed and they're vaccinated. And that, along, I've really been the snippet bus, once a month for probably two years, we've cut down that huge amount of stray cats here.
So, were they open to doing that or did they got that?
Yeah, we just happily get it on the schedule with them.
Okay, and is that the one that, um, the one visit is like eleven thousand bucks?
Yeah, that's.
For that all night?
Yeah. It's four visits for eleven thousand dollars. And then if you want to do more, after that, it's three thousand per visit.
How many cats did you say they could do this?
It was only cats, he told me that can do up to sixty. We can even use the snippet bus too, like let owners pay the hundred dollars per animal and then just let them pay for the bus to come. We can book thirty animals that day and that will pay the cost of the bus. Which we can advertise that and get people to pay in front. I mean, we wouldn't need, you know, y'all to do anything with that.
But if there is additional funding, we can take care of the ferals.
Yeah, oh yeah, for the ferals, for sure. We have a private doctor, one in particular, and she has probably paid for twin space, cats that people have, but they just can't afford to get them fixed. She likely does it and it shouldn't all fall on one person either. It shouldn't. I've had multiple donors, you know, donating to hell, but it's gonna take a lot of people and a lot of effort to really cut down on this.
So the problem has gone on so long now, the number is staggering. So, the front end cost is, is gonna be a lot more than if we can down the road at some reasonable time, hopefully, get more out of control.
And if you're dealing with feral cats, each, each one will definitely be trapped pretty much seven.
Yes.
If brought in, you're looking at thirty, forty, fifty traps being built with that, so this is a disaster.
But, and I wonder, the other thing too is that if you know a litter of kittens. They'll be the ones that is in the trouble. So getting, getting the kittens, getting them staying in the barn. And a lot of the times too, though, if you're trapped them on, the kittens will come close enough and you can ride them up.
When they're used later, they could have sliced their.
They, they cut the tip off the ear and it's visible from the essence.
So we need to get them as a job too, so you don't really want them to burn anything pretty.
Yes, yes. So anybody who looks at that, you know, the dog, don't worry about cleaning, you can trap one that has a tear. You just like to go on this.
Why the animals fighting cancer trap and not yet stay? Vaccination.
You know, that was the snippet bus. I think it's like an additional loss if I'm on the stage, but I can find out.
The virus is expensive, several.
At one time I was on the board for Grand County Animal Refuge, and we attempted to, you know, to support. To provide.
Um, and I remember an organization, this man with, uh, Robert Basin and Alice were able to give some money to the county, I don't know, it was a long time ago, but you do have people in the county who are willing to help. And I would almost offer to say, can we do some kind of matching program? If you were to have the snippet bus come, the eleven thousand dollars, I could organize some type of fundraiser to do half and match the fund. You guys match the other half. Do you think we could get a deal going?
And I will say too, the snippet bus, the way it's priced is, he told me that the first visit is three thousand. And then my regular price is three thousand and then it's thirty-six hundred dollars every month after that. But if you book those four months for the eleven thousand, then you get the discounted price for the rest of the year.
We will, we'll be happy to have this conversation every day.
Jared Mills, good evening, commissioners and everybody that's here with us this evening. Um, you should have project managers, reporters, try to go down those items. Kind of tough room, uh, relatively, working too fast. Alright, so number one, I, I obviously great news tonight, commissioners have agreed to move to negotiation. Grand County School Board, all the, I appreciate that. I will pass that on to our architect at its negotiations. They need to wait till I get confirmation that so they can start planning, they don't want to pay for something that's not a hundred percent, obviously, for the design. So I'll wait here for more, as fast as possible. And then that. Real quick on CDG, um, only update I have, obviously, the two homes. I've got slide up here real quick, a couple of items to note. Um, interior is complete. It might just a little bit of touch up paint here and there, but for the most part, it appears fully. The, uh, I, the units are up and running and, uh, very cold. So they're working operational, um, the, uh, the con, our contractor recommended that they can put anything in for a week. Just to make sure everything is up and running. I think it's pretty much continued. And so I'm, I'm anticipating maybe tomorrow or before the end of the week, they could start using that, uh, unit. I encourage anybody to go up, take a look at it. It's a really great unit, a lot of space, a lot of room for them. Store food, uh, cold and frozen. So, interior is good. Little bit of an update on the outside. Um, it's basically complete other than the shed. And of course, you can see where we wanted to give a couple updated pictures where we did try to see this good standing grass before the tall leather comes sets in, all around the outside. And see how much grass we can get off which is cold. Proof that we might have gotten a little bit of a break, obviously, God bless us on the hurricane lean. Unfortunately, our shed was not as lucky for this contract. It was being built in Irwin, Tennessee, and I don't have to tell you, um, how bad things happened in Irwin, Tennessee. So our order, we're pretty, pretty sure that it was destroyed. So our order had been moved out to the state facility, so we're gonna get about sixty-five on finishing that project. We're still good on our timeline, so no worries there. Fortunately, we sunk it as soon as we'd like to be. Um, moving on to the high school memorial stadium project. Some of you may be aware, the school did request a meeting with, uh, with Jared, myself, um, Miss Ken at Stacy. And this guy came up. Um, and they want, they wanted us to stop the project because they had found some of the needs, support needs for the school facilities. That they want to put their sales tax in towards. So I informed the, uh, the next day or the, my Friday afternoon, I informed the contractor to stop the project. So to make sure the commissioners knew, right now, we're not moving forward with any more, uh, design on the whole site. Bleachers, we know that's a set of plans for another start. If you do have set of plans. Actually, the project had went out to bid, where we, I advised the architect to do an amendment. And they'll stop that, put that in an advertise so we don't waste any contractors' time. It's important to note that also, when I wrote the invitation to bid for this, we put in a one-year option to continue to rent. Or lease these bleachers. So we do, we have the option to exercise that, which it looks like we probably need. But we're also gonna get with the school and talk to them about it if, if there could be a need, that's need to even ask for a longer period. So just be aware that we will be working with Southeast conceding, seeing the ways where the current seating option that we have. Um, item four, as you are aware, we rejected the bids. Long story short, next Wednesday, the twenty-third, we should be getting bids again for that. Long story short, next Wednesday, the twenty third, we should be getting bids again for that. Uh, item five is the evidence based asphalt paving. Uh, that is about ninety five percent complete. I reviewed the drawings and sent back some comments. Um, it's, it was delayed. We should have already went out to bid, but it was delayed obviously through communication and some storms, something had happened. Um, so we're trying to get Greg back up in the morning out again, all report back any updates that might happen. And we're also looking for some money. I didn't provide you the contractor or the engineer's estimate. So we're gonna need some more. We're roughly right at fifty percent that we give grant, so we're gonna get a little bit more money. And we'll start, I've, I've got a scheduled meeting with the state to scan the drive and we'll talk through that. We want to go forward. And then under project development, um, item six is gonna basically be go off of that, you know, good news. We finished the, um, the two houses under the C D G. We had some supplemental money that the Dogwood Health Trust gave us. Um, working to get the contract box, we're gonna try to bid those two this month. So just so we're gonna continue to move forward and try to help the needy here in the county with more, um, home reconstruction. And then item seven, along those lines, with the R D A property on this branch, we're gonna, as you know, we're gonna team the Scotty Bill, we're gonna team with the school. We've had a lot of red tape with this project, working with the grants. And then there's an insurance issue. I think I've worked out the insurance issue with our, our insurance, the county's insurance company. And there's an agreement that needs to be settled between the school's attorney and, and the and our attorney. And so we'll go from there, but we're real close to getting that started. What that does is it provides, um, teaching for school students. And then a piece of property that we can build a really, really nice home and then sell that at very low profit. Any that for somebody that's low and somebody that like myself as a teenager would have loved and had an opportunity to buy a home. That's nice and not up there in that, you know, fifty percent send by profit margin. So we'll help in that project too. Yeah.
It can be one hundred percent, um, but it's.
Correct. You go through USDA, they will fund hundred percent of the property and the construction of, of, of the house as well. So, and without, without said, if there's any questions, because this. But I thank you, Chair.
Nice talking.
Alright, and you should have, uh, since my next point of discussion, you're hard to do.
Yeah, I don't want to.
You got some shit.
Okay, so item number one on there, uh, so it's about eight, amendment number three, you do have a copy attached in your pocket just to go over the different items that are on the amendment. Uh, D S S received a check from Park Close Energy and this is Park Energy Supplements. So that changed, um, on the expenditure side as well as the revenue side. Um, D S S, and we're a few little mishaps with the adoption program or promotion program funds that, uh, correct balances were not brought in for the next four years, so they had to make some adjustments. And they were able to do that internally with their own budget to be able to correct those fine balances. So they were able to readjust it using camera verification and some of their return funds. Um, and so that changed a lot of expenditure and on the revenue side. Um, then furniture, I've purchased for the cool house. This happens last year, but it wasn't actually received till this year. So the next party, the amendment, and obviously those funds were transferred to the facilities account. They had sufficient balance to cover those. And then the fourth item on there, um, we've been doing audit work. And so the Senate bill grant, we started looking at those and the balances were all correct. And so the balances needed to be reduced to match the grant balances so that there was no overspending. So those are the items that are on your amendment. Um, so the amendment, um, this is amendment number three. And, and the appropriations that we change just follows. And we have a decrease of twenty three thousand, three hundred and forty three dollars, an increase of thirty seven thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and seventy seven cents. Now, the revenues, we would have a decrease of thirty eight thousand, one hundred and ninety, and then an increase of fifty two thousand, seven hundred and fifty two dollars and seventy seven cents.
Is there an option to bring, I don't know if there's a number three? Second or second? Second, oh, I don't.
And the next item is you have a party of the income statement that's attached to, uh, your report. Um, on that income statement. And on this income statement, it's got the activity this period as far as income is concerned at four million, nine hundred and sixty nine thousand, two hundred and fifty four dollars, thirty four cents. And, and then that is on page one of your income statement. And if you go down to page five of the income statement. Uh, we actually, as far as expenditures are concerned, uh, activity this period is five million, six eighty six, one hundred and eighty five dollars and ninety four cents. And so if you have any questions about that, I can give you more details on that one. You have a copy of that also. I need your pocket that I have the opinion on less important, you know, see if you have a copy.
Well, um.
Just to give you a report on our tax collections, our collections for the hundred year and our three hundred and twenty six thousand, nine hundred and thirty eight dollars and thirty eight cents. Prior year collections were eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy five dollars and seventy five cents. For our sales tax collections, these are August collections that are paid in October. We collected a total of three hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and sixty eight dollars and eighty five cents. The portion of that this satisfied for the schools was fifty six thousand, six dollars and seventy four cents. And the quarter cent satisfied was twenty nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty eight dollars and six cents.
You have a question, I'll talk to you there if you want, shoot, if I'm set, maybe. How do I look with sales taxes? Is it? I'm bringing it in the air.
It's actually expected to trend down.
But it looked, was it the way that I, I would be getting that on the top of it? I'm sorry about the morning.
Yeah, one minute, that's why I'm sorry.
No, I started, I'm just curious.
I think these couple of months averages have been pretty relatively the same, but it's expected, the governor of office has told us to expect it to trend down.
Thankfully, I think it's a, a travel insurance. He is running a little bit better. So. That part is a good, we do expect it to trend down. Uh, but hoping the word gets out that we're open here. And, uh, if you hear any cancellations, that have been recommended by the department.
And then the last title on there was our variable tax collection. So this is four, just collecting September, but it's paid in October. And we collected forty seven thousand, four hundred and twenty seven dollars and ninety cents.
My name is Jack Rose, um, retired thirty two year, but I'm a day accountant. Uh, you, then, and I want you to know that I, I can see the professionalism and, and the caring that this entire group shows every time I come to one of these meetings. And it might not be sent off, but thank you for your service.
Jack, thank you for your service too. I think you're a very, so.
We got releases of two thousand five hundred and twenty three dollars to the air now, so it's much improved those releases. Sorry, sir. Was the lease for?
We've already approved it. I would be. I think I'll have you have to sign it and then I'll have to give them the end of the price.
Say a.
You're already coming. I'm sorry, it's.
What was on here? Let's see, scratch it. Let's not, we'll come to the record.
Don't do that to him.
He was approved with that.
She had been saving her time. I think she took a, a late honeymoon. And we had to close because of her thing, the lane, so she was running short of time. She may not have to use any pay. Leave without pay, but she thought she might have to use at least one day. You know, that gives five a year, but it has to be approved by the board.
Motion.
For a second. And is there a motion to appoint Marie Brown to the Traveling Jewish Board and the Lions Chiefs?
Um, Mayor, the chief has served many years on government. And, uh, she has chosen one to continue there. Um, but we have a recommendation to appoint Marie Brown. Marie is the sister-in-law, so I, I can best explain to her, Marie is, she's the sister-in-law of Betty Brown. Of Lynn and Betty Brown, Lynn's place.
She married.
She's married to Lynn's brother, but Betty, Betty Brown, so. And, uh, she showed her love and seriously had a point of bringing her on board, so I have that motion.
Is there a second? Do we do these things closed?
No, sir. Oh, it's approved. Oh, yeah, one buddy.
Oh, no. Motion, don't get five shows out of the P S one forty three. Three, eight, eight, one, three, five, six. Privilege for confidential information, time of the day, to Marcella, so.